Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, May 21st. This is Committee of the Whole. Thank you all so very much for attending this evening. We've got an exciting, though, single-item docket, which is the Healthy Lakewood Foundation presentation that we've all been anticipating. And many of us, I think, have had the opportunity to attend some of the meetings so far and also remotely, thanks to the great communication from the task force, be able to look at some of the work product in progress, which has been great. So, without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our Chair of the Lakewood Healthy Foundation Planning Task Force, Erin Murphy, as well as Vice Chair, Daniel Cohn. And I know that we're joined tonight by many members of the task force itself, and we appreciate you so much for being here tonight and for all your hard work throughout. So, I'll go ahead and turn it over. Thanks.
So, our plan tonight is to present for about 15 or 20 minutes, and then we actually think it'll be really helpful to kind of open up a dialogue and see kind of how far that takes us. So, is that okay with you?
That sounds great. Yeah, I think we can definitely forward to it.
Excellent. So, we cannot possibly s- oh, no.
You ruined everything.
(laughing) I did not. My first touch.
Which one did you just say?
We ca- yeah. So, I'm Erin Murphy, and I'm the Chair of the Foundation Planning Task Force. I have been a Lakewood resident for, I think, seven years. And my day job is as a program manager at the- at Lorraine County Public Health in the Health Promotion and Crime Disease Prevention Division.
And I am Dan. As you mentioned, I'm Vice Chair of the task force. Thank you again for having us. As Erin said, we hope not to take too much of your time. I personally have a bladder the size of a peanut, so 20 minutes is really my max. So, thank you. My background is in public health and ethics. I currently serve as Vice President for Strategy at the Mount Sinai Healthcare Foundation, which is another healthcare conversion foundation here locally.
So, we really cannot squeeze 18 months of work into our presentation tonight. I don't think you want that. But we are going to try to provide a milestone outline, so you get a understanding of where we are and what we're doing.
Yeah, so, of course, you can see the goals. We certainly don't have to state them for you. I hope you all are well-equipped to read them, but basically, we just want you all to feel prepared to advance your proposal forthcoming and- over the next couple of weeks. And we'll do that by introducing a little bit of us, as we just did. We'll talk a little bit about our work in community engagement and communications. We want to share with you the mission, vision, and guiding principles and where some of those- some of that language came from, particularly in what we heard from the community engagement interviews that we did. We'll talk a little bit about the structure and legal framework and introduce our legal counsel. And we'll also talk about the Code of Regulations, which is sort of the translation of all the previous things, the sort of values and guiding principles that we had constructed in working together for about a year, to really make sure that those are operational in the work of the foundation. And then finally, we'll talk about a process that we are nearly done with as of Wednesday or Thursday, the board search process.
So, again, the Foundation Planning Task Force consists of all Lakewood residents. The city put out a search for task force members back in late 2016, and our first meeting after we were selected was in January of 2017. As I think you're aware, we are all volunteers, and so it was estimated by one of our task force members that there was quite a bit of time spent on these activities. And we would actually- we think we would equate it to at the very bare minimum or at least one full-time staff person. So, if you're trying to add a dollar amount to that in your head, it's significant. We and the rest of the task force took on a very heavy load here, and we can't commend their dedication to this enough. The task force members come from a vast variety of backgrounds and skill sets. Here in the audience today, we actually have representation from marketing, law, finance, consulting, people with foundation experience, people with healthcare experience. And so, the selection was really done in a strategic way to bring a group together that could bring different viewpoints to try to put something cohesive into play.
And you all know that, because you chose us. Thank you.
Yeah. We started really moving in May of 2017, which is when we hired Randy McSheppard as our consultant. And unfortunately, he isn't here tonight, and I wish- I should have put a picture of him in the PowerPoint slide. Darn it.
We call him Uncle Randy behind his back.
We call him Uncle Randy behind his back. But he- his guidance has really helped shape our path along the way. For those of you who don't know Randy, he has over 20 years of consulting experience. He has great experience with conversion foundations, as he was a member of the Sisters of Charity Foundation Board. He's currently also a trustee for Baldwin Wallace, as well as the George Gunn Foundation. And he works as the Vice President of Public Affairs at RPM International, which is a pain encoding company in Medina. So, sometimes we'd have conference calls with him, and he'd be like, "I'm sorry, I'm 10 minutes late. I had to call London." And we were like-
Crisis in London.
Yeah, we were like, "Oh, it's just me and Dan."
Shall we? All right, so we wanted to talk to you a little bit about community engagement, which was, given the sensitivity and given the strife in the community around the closure of Lakewood Hospital, which, by the way, is certainly not an uncommon experience in the history of healthcare conversion foundations, we really wanted this process to center on community and voice. Community voice, and frankly, we wanted our process to be part of the healing of this community and hope that it would be redemptive. Toward that end, we facilitated- we actually identified 16 different constituency groups throughout Lakewood, and actually in the surrounding areas as well that bear on the health outcomes of Lakewood residents, to just get a sense of what are some of the issues in Lakewood? Who are some of the local leaders whose voices need to be heard as part of our process? How do you define health and wellness was one of the questions that we had asked folks? And what are some of the things that community members hope that we keep in mind as a task force as we go about the task of creating a foundation? That translated into about 87 conversations. I say about, no, it actually was 87 conversations, which included both one-on-one interviews and focus groups. We met with folks representing the faith community, people in the LGBT community, folks who are experiencing HIV and AIDS, folks in different racial and ethnic categories. We really spanned what we thought and what we heard from the community as sort of a representative sample of folks here in our backyard. From there, we had facilitated a community forum where we got 45 individuals in attendance, not only to present the findings of our work and the findings of what we put together as a report, our community engagement report, kind of what we had heard throughout those interviews, but it was also a way for us to continue those two- that sort of two-way communication. We hope that constantly, not only what would happen at the foundation in the future would inform what happens in the community, but also that what happens in the community is informing in real time what happens both at the task force and in the future foundation. Oh, this one's me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, some of the things that we had learned and we shared out at the forum were the importance of communication and transparency, and we'll talk about that a little bit when we get to the Code of Regulations and the structure of the foundation. The need to center on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to define those words in really clear terms, was loudly heard from the community, and we can talk about that in a little bit as well. The importance of collaboration, of leveraging resources, of not duplicating efforts. We know that Lakewood is full of resources and is full of good people already doing amazing work. So, how could this foundation and how can we create a foundation that is built around not duplicating the great work that's already happening? And finally, that Lakewood has the- is uniquely positioned to be a potential leader nationally in wellness, and this foundation could help advance that idea.
Simultaneously, while we were doing some of the community engagement interviews, the task force was inviting local experts to come to our meetings and share with us their experience with either health foundations, the needs of the Lakewood community. And so, we kind of did our homework as well in terms of gathering information, so that as a task force, since we are from such varying backgrounds, we sort of started this journey out on the same page. So, like Dan said, being transparent and ensuring communication was something brought up every time, almost every time. And so, we knew that that was important. Of course, all of our meetings had to be public, and so those were posted at onelakewood.com. We also use social media as an outlet to reach people, as well as news releases and even hard copy information that would be distributed among different networks in the community. And we knew that we wanted this to be more than one-sided communication. So, what we did is we actually started a mailbox on the website where people could submit their questions to us, and we could reply and answer them. And we also, of course, allowed public comment at all of our meetings as well. We got- we even got- we got great articles that were sent by Lakewood residents that we thought- that they, you know, they thought would be useful to us, that were amazing, and we made sure that we shared those with the rest of the task force. So, we pretty much adopted these- this multi-method communication system every time we were aiming to get a message out. On the PowerPoint, you can see the- on the right is the analytics slide, which just gives you a quick snapshot of when we kind of did pushes, how much our traffic increased to the page, so we could tell that that was working and the methods that we were using were working. We were included in multiple papers, The Lakewood Observer, The Sun News, and Cleveland.com, as well as On the Patch numerous times. And I think everybody in the task force, especially Mike Bentley, shared our social media posts on every page and friend that he knows, which was great and helpful.
He has a lot of friends.
Yeah.
He's a friendly person.
We also recognized, and what's really cool is that the community of Lakewood confirmed this. We had people tell us, you know, Lakewood really is uniquely positioned as a community to stand out as a leader in health and wellness. A lot of, you know, kind of that groundwork and infrastructure is already here. Lakewood gets recognized at the national level for being a community where all students walk to school. And so, I just included a couple pictures of some of examples of infrastructure that are already here. Again, like Dan said, there's a number of different groups and stakeholders in the community that are doing work like this. And so, we knew that we would have to set the groundwork for a foundation that could really harness a lot of this energy and be able to leverage and maximize the impact.
6:20, so we'll be- we'll be more efficient.
Yeah.
So, we took on the task, of course, you know, we have these broad ideas about being a national model perhaps, or Lakewood being a national model for community health, and we needed to figure out a way to encapsulate that and hit these statements that we thought would communicate what it is that the foundation, the future foundation, would try to do. So, these were just kind of our working definitions of vision, mission, and guiding principles. We will share that with you in just a moment, but I just want to get on the same page about what- how we define those words. So, of course, vision is what the cha- the change that the foundation is trying to drive toward, basically what difference will the foundation make. The mission is what is the foundation's purpose? What will the foundation do to actualize that vision, to make it happen? And our guiding principles, or you may have heard the word values, whatever you want to call it, guiding principles were or are for us, those things, those terms, those ideas that guide organizational operations and decision-making integrity.
So, after much discussion about these pieces, a lot of dialogue within the task force, this is a vision and mission that we landed on. So, the vision being that Lakewood is a place where all people achieve their fullest health potential. And to do that, we must advance programs, policies, and practices that help inspire Lakewood community in which health and wellness are reflected in all aspects of life.
So, the guiding principles that help an organization operationalize those are as follows, and I'll read these kind of slowly to let them sink in a bit. First, we really wanted to focus on the stewardship of resources. The stewardship of resources is rooted in humility, integrity, and community voice. Organizational practices should be transparent and informed by authentic dialogue and engagement. Health and wellness can be promoted in ways that are both innovative and evidence-informed. Opportunities, initiatives, and strategies should leverage new and existing resources that result in sustainable impact. And finally, positive changes driven by shared priorities, coordinated efforts, and trust.
While we were developing the vision, mission, and guiding principles, we were also working on the structure and legal framework. So, we did research various tax structures. We had a subcommittee dedicated to that work. You'll see, this is just one example of a projection that was done for combined community impact. We talked about the foundation lifecycle. We did a legal counsel search for our legal counsel that would help actually us make these decisions, presenting some pros and cons, and then in turn, kind of putting what we, you know, what we came to in terms of vision, mission, guiding principles, what we wanted the structure to look like, and how did we translate that into the documents that will eventually govern the new foundation.
One of the underlying principles through this work, and I just want to see what our next one- okay. So, one of the guiding principles for us was to not be so arrogant as to be able to predict or think that we could predict what it is that the board would want to do with the resources that it has. And so, we made- the decisions that we made largely centered on creating the sort of skeleton and a framework by which the Board of Directors, the future Board of Directors, would make its decisions. But we tried to, in the legal framework and in the legal structure, provide a good deal of flexibility for future board members to make decisions. So, for example, we made the decision to apply as a public charity. We could talk a little bit about public charity versus private foundation versus type-one supporting organization. These are all technical terms we'd be happy to walk through. That might be boring for you. And some other things, like we had a good deal of debate around, should this be a limited life or a spend-down foundation versus a foundation in perpetuity? And so, those are decisions that we worked through and ultimately made as robust and broad decisions as possible, so that the future board would have lots of options to choose from. Is this one me or you?
This is me.
Okay.
So, going back to, again, referencing the vision, mission, and guiding principles, we really wanted that to be more than lip service. So, we, again, translated some of that into action and into something tangible within our Code of Regulations. So, I wanted to highlight just a couple pieces and how we did that. So, we do have 11 of 17 board directors in the Code of Regulations. We thought this was a manageable size for a foundation that maybe will not have a ton of staff support, but it still has enough people on the board that if people drop out or don't show up or whatever, there's still lots of robust dialogue that can occur. We require that two-thirds of the board members be from Lakewood, because, again, what we heard from the community is that this foundation is going to serve Lakewood. We need people on the board that know Lakewood and live Lakewood. So, that was really important to include.
Can I make a little-
Yes.
-addition to that? Most of the Code of Regulations could be amended by a two-thirds vote, and so we thought it was really important to align that two-thirds amendment process for many of the requirements, along with the residency requirement. So, that's where that number came from. We thought at some point, three-quarters, and, you know, we really toyed with that particular number, and that's how we settled on it.
Again, restrictions on self-dealing are included in the Code of Regulations. It is a requirement as sets a code that there be public promotion when board positions are available, using the multiple methods of communication that we kind of outlined earlier in this presentation. And I would say probably one of the crown jewels of this code is the community engagement and accountability piece. Yay! And really makes it kind of unique in the sense that the Board of Directors is really to strive for broad-based community involvement, and they will be required to do an annual meeting for the public where they can help- or they'll outline, you know, what was funded, how it was funded, who the board members are, and things like that. And then they also, every three years, will be required to develop and adopt a community engagement and accountability plan, which will specify the actual methods that they will be using to ensure that they are bringing that community voice into the decisions that they are making.
And if I could just add, as someone who works in the field, we were so excited because it seemed so much to align with the values of our work, but, you know, this- this type of requirement in the Code of Regulations is really remarkable across healthcare conversion foundations and really across philanthropy. Foundations for years have been striving for, and I'll talk a little bit about the way in which we integrate equity, diversity, and inclusion, but striving for ways to operationalize some of these values, like community voice and community engagement, equity, diversity, and inclusion. And we took some serious risks. There's a really- this is a heavy lift for a board to incorporate all of these ideas into their work, but we feel really good about it, and we've only heard in our board interviews so far, we've only heard really positive feedback. So, we're excited about that and happy to talk with you more about it in a bit. So, I want to tell you a little bit about the Board Search Committee. We have been in operation since February. We were requested by the mayor and by some folks in the community to take on the task of creating the first board. That was not part of our original charge. In fact, we were just tasked with kind of outlining the framework by- within which the board would operate, but not actually selecting the board members themselves at the encouragement of the mayor, at the encouragement of the community in February 2018. We reluctantly agreed to take that on. We made our plan public and shared it with you all, I believe, as well as the mayor in March 2018, including our timeline. And then our recruitment began in April 2018. Wednesday is our final night of interviews. We've narrowed from 81 applicants. Is that my next slide? Okay. So, I'll give you some of the outcomes of that, or the outputs, rather, briefly, but we've had 81 people apply for virtually 15 spots on the board. We've had amazing feedback from the community. Our process as part of the Board Search Committee was really assisted by BVU, Business Volunteers Unlimited, which has a good deal of local expertise in creating boards, onboarding these types of organizations, incorporating groups, and they have been helpful on the administrative side, so actually helping us craft the application, taking in the applications themselves, helping us sort them and figure out, and actually creating a board matrix of knowledge, skills, and lived experiences, so we can really get a sense of, as we're looking at the broad scope of all of the candidates, what is it that they bring, what unique experiences or lived- life experience do they bring to a certain room or a certain decision-making process? We had a broad communication strategy, as I had alluded to prior. We had sent this out to all of our- per our Board of- our Code of Regulations, we put this out in social media, on the Lakewood website, in multiple forms of print media. We ourselves, as the committee and actually as a task force, sent out targeted outreach to folks that we knew in the community who might be- who might be interested in a director position. And I think important to this is that the folks that we had engaged early on, those 87 people that we had interviewed, we reached out to them again and said, "Hey, just so you know, this is where we are in our process. We'd love for either you to apply or for one of the folks that you said would be expert and would be able to help the foundation to apply." All right. Is this one me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I mentioned that equity, diversity, and inclusion piece, and I just wanted to review these definitions with you, because those words are sort of thrown out into the atmosphere a lot. But these were our working definitions that we incorporated into our board search process. So, when we talk about equity, we're ensuring that every person, no matter their background, no matter their race, no matter their socioeconomic status, educational attainment, immigration status, that everyone has what they need to live up to their fullest potential. Bam. Diversity refers to the visible and invisible mixture of differences and similarities between people that frame how they see the world and interact with it. So, often we refer to diversity as counting the people in the room, counting the lived experiences, counting the expertise. Inclusion is how you ensure that people who are in the room, the diverse group of people, actually feel as though their experiences can be brought to bear in a positive way. So, this is the active, intentional, and ongoing engagement with diversity, including intentional policies and practices that promote full participation and a sense of belonging among all members of a group or an organization. That was a lot of syllables in a short amount of time. I'm sorry.
Here's your slide.
What's that?
Nothing. Here's your slide.
Oh, okay. Well, darn it. I already went over this one. As I mentioned, we had 81 applications. We had a broad mix of knowledge, skills, and lived experiences represented as part of our applicant pool. We still have some applications rolling in. But across race, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, residency, immigration status, board experience, that was a significant factor in terms of our bringing people into the fold. We wanted people- we know this will be a heavy lift. We wanted people who had a significant amount of nonprofit experience and board experience. We actually had one candidate who is- who is soon to be a member of the Lakewood community, and her family has been searching for years, literally years, to find their perfect community, and they have landed on Lakewood and they plan to be here the rest of their lives. And just reading through that application actually was really interesting and fun. Anyway, finally, in terms of our process, I went over all those things.
Yeah. Nailed it.
Bam.
So, we want to acknowledge and give a really big thank you to our task force members, again, many who are here tonight, and their names are listed here. In addition to Randy, like I said, to Susan Scheidzeau, who is our legal counsel right there, to Shannon, who does so much behind the scenes.
All of the things.
All of the things was a great help to us. And then, in addition, all of the community members that helped provide feedback and input to us, the local experts that we invited in and spoke with us, and our colleagues nationwide that we had to consult on some different things to kind of get this job going. All of our information, of course, is on the website. My email address is there, and so is Dan's. And, yeah, you can take a look at it any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, that was a great presentation, and clearly, as you alluded, there's an incredible breadth of work that the task force did that couldn't possibly be crammed into one presentation or even 90-minute meeting. So, you know, I trust that we've all been reviewing that work as it goes along, and if council members are up for it, I think we should go ahead and open the floor to any questions or comments from council members at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman O'Malley.
Thank you both very much, and thank you to all members of the task force for the, as was mentioned, the very significant commitment of your time and energy to this. I think the community will be grateful to you for many, many years to come for the work that you put into this. And I know I mentioned at a council meeting a couple of months ago, particularly when Mike and Vicky were here, of the great work that you've done, and Mike in particular, you've been very available to me in answering a lot of the questions that I've had along the way, so thank you. Can you talk a little bit about a spend-down foundation versus some of the other options and what the recommendation is of the task force?
Sure. So, this was actually a significant debate for us. I can give you the conclusion, and I can give you a little bit of the details around how we made that decision. So, ultimately, the conclusion was to create basically a foundation in perpetuity. We did that for a few reasons. Primary among them was that because the resources of the foundation would be coming in over a 16-year period, it would be difficult, if not impossible, for us to- for us to make the strategic decisions and do all the research that would be necessary to identify what strategy a board would have to undertake in order to spend down those resources as they were coming in. Secondly, we also wanted to provide the board, if in 16 years, or 10 years, or five years, they wanted to become a spend-down or they wanted to move toward a limited-life foundation, we wanted to provide them that flexibility. But the flexibility didn't necessarily work in reverse. So, if we were to go ahead with the spend-down, a limited-life option, there's- it's really difficult to turn back, especially with fairly limited resources. And then there are a few other pieces to that, and I'll just gloss over those. You know, there's- there's a little bit of an assumption, I think, that limited-life foundations are more impactful, or might be more impactful, or might push innovation. The literature is really mixed on that. In fact, the literature suggests that that's not so much the case, that in terms of limited-life foundations, they tend to be really careful with their dollars and really pigeonhole to a certain strategy, and especially because these resources would be coming in over 16 years. We have no idea what the health issues of Lakewood would be in 16 years. So, for us to set a strategy now for resources that wouldn't be coming in for another decade and a half just didn't seem feasible. And finally, the idea behind limited life, and this has evolved a little bit over time, but the original idea behind limited life basically came from family foundations, you know, heirs who had a lot of money, folks who built companies, and then basically didn't want their drug-addict kids to spend their money in terrible ways. I mean, that- at the baseline, that's how it was. So, they wanted to spend all the money before they died. The way in which that has translated toward more public-facing foundations has been a little bit sloppy and hasn't worked out in the way that more private and family-operated foundations have. So, that was a little bit of the reason why we chose not to go with the limited life.
The selection of the initial board members. Mayor, I know you had emailed us in early April to talk about the possibility of the task force vetting potential board members, and fine by me and appreciated, in fact. What would the process be then for- would council then sort of ratify a slate of candidates or the regulators ratify that?
So, what's before us combined is a resolution that would approve the recommendations of this task force. So, they will submit the recommendations in their final form, which they have yet to do so, since they are still working on their recommended slate. I think there's an expectation that in the not-too-distant future, we'll be receiving that piece of the recommendation. We have the Code of Regulations before us today. We have the vision, the mission that they've created. We have the vision, the mission that they've created, and that we would, through a vote of council and an affirmation of signature by mayor, then either accept or reject them. If we reject them, then we would have to work together to figure out how we're going to reconcile what we reject. You know, what is it that we reject of all this vast amount of work, and how would we go about doing that work independently? The Lakewood Hospital Association trustees have the same question. So they are obligated to get, in this case, a little more quickly up to speed, and then they'll also take these recommendations, what I believe to be in the whole cloth, and they'll have to make the same decision through a resolution vote of the trustees. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much. The, I had emailed maybe a month ago or so about the presence of Cleveland Clinic directors, and I first, I've got a couple of questions about this. Is there any issue with the Cleveland Clinic having both voting members of the board of this foundation and also having right of first refusal for the funded activities of the foundation? Would the IRS, are they, do they have a custom of approving that kind of an arrangement? What are some of the issues?
Was that to Kavanaugh's ass?
Whoever can answer it.
No.
Some lawyer, please.
Well, I guess honesty is the best policy here. We're not entirely sure exactly what that means in terms of the right of first refusal. I think in my discussions with Mr. Butler, it means that they have a right in sponsorships to have their name on it, but we don't feel it gives them any right to reject or direct the activities of the foundation. So if the foundation determines to do something and to help sponsor something, the clinic, if it's come from the clinic money, is going to have the right to put their name on it, but no more than that. That's my interpretation. Now, Kevin may have a...
And I have a sort of historical view of that question, having participated in those conversations as well. But go ahead, Kevin.
I only, thanks, Mayor. I only wanted to qualify one thing that you said, Susan, which is that the clinic, only to the extent that they have the ability to have two board members have the right to direct what the foundation does.
Oh, correct. Correct. Only for that length of time. Correct.
They have, they have board representation, so they get to weigh in. It's, as you know, somewhat diluted.
Okay. I'm going to come back to that in a second, but...
And if I may, I think my impression was that if, in fact, the foundation elected to fund a particular clinical service, and the clinic had abilities to deliver that service, that they would have a shot at competing to deliver it, especially if their money was the, what's involved. So I viewed it as a little more tactical at the service-delivery standpoint. But I think Susan's right. That has really, yet to be really clarified in practice and indeed, and ultimately, I would expect this new board to weigh in and figure all that out, and use the power of the majority rules to be able to determine what's at stake there.
Okay. Thank you. I was, I was just in response to that, Mayor, going to state, for what it's worth, I think my own personal preference in that respect would be the option, the interpretation, rather, that Law Director Butler forth. And I think, I think that to Councilman O'Malley's point, there is a pretty stark difference, potentially, between those two things, and I think it does raise some questions that are maybe worth taking a harder look at, if it is going to be the latter and not the former. But, Councilman O'Malley, I didn't want to interrupt your line of questioning here.
One last point, and I don't want to spend too much time on this because it's a pretty minute point and one that won't be prescient for another 15 years or so, but the master agreement, and I emailed the board about this, and I appreciate their consideration of it, the task force, rather, that the clinic's rights to membership on the board should survive until the period during which the clinic owns and operates the FHC, or one year after their final contribution. The, in Article III, subsection C of the rules that are before us this evening, it says that their rights shall survive until the date on which the clinic ceases to own and operate the Family Health Center. Is it the beginning of, is it during that period, or the cessation of that period that that right survives? The rules that are before us this evening says the cessation of that period. It says in the master agreement during. We can come back to this and even discuss it offline.
Yeah, it should, we can discuss it offline. It was meant to track the master agreement, so I will, I can verify and talk to Law Director Butler and make sure that it tracks what the agreement states.
Okay. One other point on that, just briefly. The master agreement also states that, it says, the later of, excuse me, the later of one year after the clinic's final contribution, or the period during which they own, the rules state it shall cease one year after the later of, where it's actually, that one year after only applies to the first criterion of the date of the final contribution.
Oh, okay.
So just want to point that out. Again, I want to thank you all. Somebody can remind me in 15 years to bring that up. Thank you all very much for your, for your time and attention here. Again, it's a great service, and appreciate your volunteerism.
Thank you. Councilman Rader?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to echo Councilman O'Malley's sentiments. The work you guys put into this is immense. I'm sure it equals more than one full-time person, because many people spent many sleepless nights thinking about this, I'm sure. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all the effort you put into it. And I think it is going to, I think your work so far in the process has certainly been a model for how to work, work out these, these types of situations, so thank you. So, I don't know, maybe we're going to talk about this later. Was there another portion of your presentation, or was that the full presentation tonight? Real quick, that was it?
This was a full presentation.
Okay. Thank you. No, it was great. So let's talk quickly about why you chose public charity. I was there for part of the meeting when we talked about public charity versus these other options, and I'm glad you chose public charity. I know a little bit about this, but I know it's immensely complicated, and I'd love to just hear more.
Yeah. We chose public charity, frankly, because we don't have to pay the tax that a private foundation would pay, and it's preferable in terms of some filings and other, other things. However, the task force felt very strongly about the self-dealing restrictions in, in private foundations, and so that was baked into these code of regs. So there's no self-dealing at all with, with trustees, which actually, public charities are allowed to have that if it's fair market value and a variety of things. So having said that, we just, we chose it, one, because it's a preferential status, and two, we think that we can qualify for it. Now, if we don't, we will have to drop back. And if you know a little bit about this, it's, one of the problems with public charity status under 509A1 is that contributions are capped out to, there's a limitation on how much you can take and include it in public, in, in public support. However, the Cleveland Clinic has a classification that allows us to consider their contributions in total, and so how we, as the city's contributions in total would be considered. So as we're, we're kind of contemplating this, this is money that even if it technically is coming from LHA, is either the clinic, the Cleveland Clinic or the city of Lakewood's money. Those parties agreed to send it to the foundation, and consequently, we believe it qualifies in total. That will be a decision that the IRS is going to have to make, but that's, we, we think there's a pretty good chance of that. That's how we characterized it, and consequently, since we can qualify, why not? Now, I will say that if the, if over time, the foundation does not raise additional dollars and doesn't decide to go into doing fundraising on its own, after 15 years, it may have to change its qualification to private foundation. But why not take the preferential treatment right now while we can have it?
Can I add a couple more points to that? Just in terms of the differences between public and private, one of the things that we realized, given the relatively few assets of the future foundation, is that one of the ways in which it could seek to scale its impact is by engagement in public policy. There are much fewer restrictions on public charities engaging in, in public policy relative to private foundations. Secondly, and Susan alluded to this, although it has the public charity, although we're aiming for public charity, tax-exempt status, we have incorporated many of the restrictions that private foundations and many of the communications and transparency requirements that, that are required of private foundations. So one of them, of course, is restrictions on self-dealing. Another is communications and open transparency about grants made to which organizations, for which amounts. Those are not requirements of public charities, those are requirements for private foundations. So we sort of took the best of both worlds, allowing the future foundation to operate like a, like a public charity, but be as transparent and accountable as a private foundation would have to be.
So if the board were, and thank you, and if the board were to choose to change that, they could change that, that this is something that is sort of somewhat flexible, depending on how you qualify or if you qualify, right? Okay.
And that was another piece. It's my, my understanding is that to go from a private charity to a public, or a private foundation to a public charity is much more difficult than the reverse. So again, we are trying to make as many options available to the board as they would see fit.
Good. Thank you guys again.
Thank you. Any other council members' questions or comments? Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I echo my colleagues' sentiments, and thank you, all of you, for your very, very hard work and many, many hours you've spent on this. I was able to attend a couple of your meetings, and I see how much thought was put into this by all of you, so we're very lucky to have residents like yourselves in Lakewood working on this. I have a question just a little bit about how the interview process is going and how that was determined. It sounds like you said you had 81 applicants, so were each of those applicants interviewed, or was it narrowed down? Can you just describe that a little bit?
Yeah, thank you for asking that, and I'm sorry, I kind of blew through the last slide there. We had 81 applicants in total. Among them, BVU actually helped us go through our first sort. We felt it important to have kind of a third party help us narrow down in our first, in our first round. BVU presented to us probably a total of between 20 and 25, us being a committee of the task force, which ended up being about three-quarters of the task force anyway. We went through the, the list with her, reviewed the applications together, and I personally reviewed all of the applications alongside BVU. From there, we narrowed it to 21 candidates, including three task force members. One of the, the code of regulations requires that at least two task force members serve on the first board to help with institutional knowledge and carryover. But aside from that, the rest of those spots, of course, we hope to be filled by this slate. We've got 21 folks. In total, 18 of those are outside of the, the task force. We have chosen to interview all of those that we've narrowed down, so we've had 30-minute conversations with each of them. We're about nine hours into interviews now. We've got about five hours tomorrow, or, I'm sorry, Wednesday, and on Thursday, we will hopefully come up with our final slate. Right, gang? Nailed it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other council members have additional? Yes, Councilman Lyden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one thing that comes from your presentation is that we clearly need to put water bottle holders at our...
Thank you, yes.
Water first, thirst.
Yeah, my hips are just...
Anyway, as, as has been said, thank you all for your public services. This is, you know, public service of, of the highest order, and we really appreciate all of your, all of your work. A few quick questions. Do we anticipate that the foundation will need staff or, or a management service, a foundation management service company of some kind or another, Janine? Or otherwise?
We probably do anticipate that they will need some, some professional services at some level, but of course, we're leaving all those decisions up to the future board, and when they are selected, they're going to have to hit the ground running, I think.
We also have multiple pro forma projections for what it would look like to staff the foundation versus not staffing it, and what sort of miscellaneous expenses might be included is, including consultancy and some other services. So we have those projections ready to hand off to the future board.
Excellent. And were any of the interviews with Cleveland Clinic individuals, or are those separately appointed? You said you were narrowing it to 15, and your, our target's 17, so I'm guessing that the two are the two. Okay.
We, we have been in contact with the Cleveland Clinic about their appointees. We're still sort of figuring out how to marry those processes. Our hope is that if not now, then in the future, every board member, no matter who they represent, will go through a similar process, if for nothing else than to build a sort of level of collegiality and, you know, working-togetherness.
Sure. And would you anticipate your group also providing an onboarding or...
So we've solicited a proposal from BVU, who's been helping us with this process so far. That proposal, we hope to, to provide to the board, which would include consultancy, their first, you know, helping facilitate the first couple of meetings, helping them organize into committees, as well as curating all of our documents that you hopefully have gone through. There are dozens and dozens, but curating those to develop some onboarding materials for the future board.
Great. And what is, define self-dealing for me as it pertains to your presentation.
Do you want the legal definition?
It's always the safe definition.
Yeah, right.
Self-dealing is when the organization has any dealings with board members or companies that board members own, so that even though there is, as I said, private, public charities can purchase things from board members of its fair market value, they could rent space from board members of its fair market value. The task force chose to prohibit that, so that it literally cannot have any business dealings with board members, and it cannot have, I believe it's, can't have business dealings with any companies that board members own more than 35% of, or that they would receive commissions from, so that they, the individual board members really cannot benefit financially in any way from being on the, on the board.
And I was going to ask a secondary question, and if there was any kind of a disclosure agreement that board members would need to sign, but maybe that requirement makes it unnecessary?
No, it, it is necessary, and in fact, in the code of regulations, we state that there will be a conflict of interest policy developed, there will be annual disclosure. We are not saying that a board member could not also sit on a board of an organization in which receives grant funding, because then no one's going to be wanting to sit on the board, but they have to abstain from that. So yes, there, there is a annual disclosure and conflict of interest. One, which we need in order for tax-exempt status, but two, as with everything here, the task force has even been more robust than what, than what we have to do, because they're concerned about that.
And is that potential for self-dealing, has that excluded any candidates in your interviewing process, or did you choose not to interview anybody because of it?
That I don't know.
Yeah?
No, that, that hasn't...
Okay.
I mean, not that, we also haven't been, you know, in full transparency, we haven't, like, asked on the application, is there anything, you know, do you plan to, to gain financially from this? That hasn't been part of the application process, but because it's shown up in the code of regulations, that it really hasn't been...
Sure. I only ask because I'd hate for someone to be placed on the board and then, oh, two weeks later realize, oh, wait, you know, there's a major conflict.
We're hoping that we've scoped people out pretty sufficiently, but we've, will, hopefully, we'll escape that.
That was a lot of questions. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Any other council members have additional? Yep. Why don't we, I guess, go with Councilman Bullock and then Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the commissioners and the administration and the experts that have put a lot of time and effort into this. So a couple procedural questions and a couple substantive questions. So to the council president, do you, what do you anticipate our timeline for decision-making is? I see the resolution and the, the multi-part on-block approval. It's, it's requesting from council. I'd like us to be deliberative and don't want to rush, although I do understand that the optimal outcome is, is there's a timely, timeliness to, to being able to get the foundation up and running.
Yes, thanks. I think that's a great question, and, you know, while council will, I think, take the time that it needs to make sure that it is thorough and evaluative of what's already been a very thoughtful process. I think that there are some considerations that play into this. For example, certainly, you know, not that we ever really do this unless there's a compelling reason to, but we wouldn't be acting on it tonight, for example, because we still, the task force has its, its work to do with respect to interviewing candidates and making those recommendations. And I think, and I would invite either Dan or Aaron to touch base on this, too, but ideally, the foundation, I think, would be set up in early July or late June so that it could start receiving the payments that would be triggered when the Family Health Center opens. Is that, have I done that justice and... Is that, have I done that justice in explanation?
I think June 18th might be the earliest and probably your last meeting in July would be the latest in terms of our preference.
And I think, also, I guess, that reminds me, there is an anticipated community forum presentation as well. And is that pegged for the 18th or is that...
June 13th.
June 13th, thank you. So that would be, you know, something that we would obviously want to allow to have happen as part of our evaluation of the task force work to see what other reactions are, there are in the community to the plan as proposed.
I was just going to say, the timeline that we are subscribing to, to keep ourselves on track really, is to be able to present the list of, so you have the list of recommended board members by your June 4th meeting. And then we would anticipate inviting the community back to a community forum on June 13th where, of course, everything that we would share with them would come with a contingency, you know, that this has not been approved, but this is what we're proposing. But our vision was really, because we got so much information from them at our November community forum, we feel like we owe it to the community to say, because you told us this, this is what we put into our recommendation so that they had an understanding of that. And then I believe your meeting after, your next meeting after June 4th would be the June 18th meeting, which as Mayor Summers said, would be sort of your earliest that you would be able to make that decision. We would love to, even when you are, when you determine kind of what your decision date is, we would love to even invite some of the board members to come maybe for a reception of some sort and make sure the public was aware that they could come and meet them if desired.
And in terms of the timeline for the board selection committee, which we had made public in early March, we anticipate making our final decisions for the board this Thursday. Our final interviews will be Wednesday. We plan to meet again as a committee on Thursday and we will have made our decisions hopefully by Monday, at which point we plan to communicate them to you all. So Monday is the Memorial Day holiday, so we don't expect you to read them, but hopefully Tuesday you'll have them in your box.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So a little context for the members of the task force. So thank you for all the work and expertise that you've invested and brought to the table. From the seat of a council member, we have the responsibility just as much as you have. In fact, since we're the final decision makers, at least I feel personally obligated to put as much time and thought and catch up with what you've been able to do with the invested time and your professional expertise and your professional counsel. So some of these questions may sound like, geez, why are you, you know, poking at the dish that, you know, you're serving up this beautiful French meal and why am I asking if there's enough pepper or salt and checking for flies and all that kind of thing? But that's part of the context for, I think, how we do our job. So, so thank you for...
We appreciate your checking our fruit flies.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So on the point, so for example, I have not anticipated that the task force would be making the decisions about board appointees. So my thought would be that you are making decisions about recommendations of who would be on the board.
Sure.
And that's an important distinction. What I'd love to understand is your thought process and your criteria by which you're screening the 81 down to 26 and the 26 down to 15, because I'm sure that there are valuable judgments and insights that you're bringing to the table. And I suppose what I'd like to, or what I'll suggest is that there's some one-on-one communication that I at least do and maybe if other council members are interested, that they can also do or we could pull in another committee session. But anybody who makes appointment decisions ultimately is making a judgment. It's not a robotic formula. So somebody's making a judgment about whom to evaluate and screen and propose. And so, you know, I anticipate my own interest in that element to be quite high. Now, I also understand from talking with Shannon Strachan in the mayor's office, that the initial board, their scope of work is maybe preliminary, they're setting up shop, they're doing the initial incorporation work. So to even get to that, understanding of what makes a good initial board selection, I need to understand more deeply than I do now what the first term of service is going to be, what the main focus is going to be.
Sure.
So in other words, you know, are we getting right away, right out of the gate to the work of selecting one or more health conditions, drilling down, figuring out evidence-based initiatives in which to invest? And I understand that may not be the case until, I don't know, two, three, five years out, in which case the kind of board members that we're looking for in this first round are different than what we might initially expect. So that gets us into a whole series of substantive questions. Why don't I hear an answer to that first and then I got a couple follow-on ones?
Yes.
Sure. So I think it was a few questions in one, so if I don't answer, please, please help me. I just want to say that one of the things that I blew through unfortunately was the amount of research that we did in identifying what are some of the particular skills and qualities that are necessary for a functioning foundation board. And we relied heavily on the Board Source, which is a nationally renowned organization that helps with foundation board management, as well as the Ford Foundation and some others. And really throughout, we have been, as we've been researching limited life versus perpetuity, all of these resources and all of our extensive research helped us to articulate some of the qualities and the skills that we would want and that we hope that you all would want in an initial board. And I will identify a few of those here. I just want to highlight something that you said that I completely agree with. There's only so much that we can get from a written application. There's only so much in terms of people's self-identified skills, there's only so much that we can see on a resume. The purpose behind the interviews was exactly what you're talking about, is sort of gut feeling. And we realized that this would be both a sort of quantitative analysis of people's skills, but also a qualitative analysis of having been doing this work for 18 months, having lots of expertise both in philanthropy and the folks who are interviewing have extensive experience in the community, Phyllis Dykes, Vicky Smigelsky, myself, Katie Cullen, who also has a good deal of experience in nonprofit management and philanthropy herself. So that's just a little bit of the context, that it was both a sort of quantitative analysis as well as a qualitative analysis, because as someone made the comparison, there are lots of ingredients to the soup and one of the most important pieces is making sure that all those ingredients can fit together and work together really well. The last thing that I'll say before I talk to you a little bit about the knowledge and skills and demographics data that we had collected and analyzed is some of the most important parts of a foundation board, per our research, were things like foundation, board members who understood their roles, board members who were able to help an executive understand a strategic process and provide strategic oversight, providing guidance and mentorship to an executive. From executives and what we know from the field is that executives regularly want guidance and mentorship. They also want oversight and they want assistance with management. They also want incredible engagement from their board members, so people who are showing up to meetings, but also people who can provide the level of connectedness and connections in the community that help them do their jobs better. So that's just a little bit about what the research tells us is important for board members and from our own personal experience in foundations. So I'll tell you a little bit about the skills and knowledge areas and demographics that we've screened for and then I'd be happy to answer others, if that's all right. So some of the skills that we looked at, nonprofit management, experience in strategic planning, program evaluation, technology, IT, finance, accounting, investment, legal, healthcare, healthcare slash wellness, personnel slash HR, government relations, marketing, communications, social media, education, and then we had a section for others that folks could self-identify other areas of skill. In terms of areas of knowledge, we included community engagement, organizing, equity, diversity and inclusion, collaborative leadership, mental and behavioral health, the social determinants of health, education, economic development, aging, early childhood, immigration and refugee, refugee issues, public health, faith-based initiatives and other. And then finally, in the demographic area, and we didn't include these as sort of a checkbox, we wanted to provide folks the opportunity to bring to light any sort of lived experiences that they thought were important to bring to bear in a decision-making process within the boardroom. Those demographics, some of the, we listed some of those that people could self-identify and describe, and we also opened it up for them to describe for themselves. But those include Lakewood residency, well, actually, that was a requirement to identify, age, race, gender, gender identity, education, ethnicity, culture, socioeconomic status, disability and LGBTQ and other. So we really went to the literature. We dug into our own experience. Many of us serve on nonprofit boards and foundation boards. I will say that from the slate of 21 or so that we have for 18, that we've narrowed down each of these skills and expertise areas and almost all the demographics, if not all the demographics, are certainly well represented.
Thank you. Okay, so backing it up to get even more interested, more directly at what we're ultimately trying to do here, I'll acknowledge the very thorough work with your process and your ethical standards. That all looks great, fine with me. And I think I would have expected nothing less from all of you and the community would have expected nothing less. So the parts that really I'm focused on are what's this board, excuse me, what's this foundation going to do?
Sure.
What should it be doing? How much or how little is doable? And then backing out of that, what's the best structure on key decisions like the legal structure and fundraising and in perpetuity or spend down, which we've touched on a little bit. Probably don't have time to thoroughly get into all of that, but to me, that's the, those are the driving questions. And I suspect that in your due diligence, first of all, let me also say, you certainly have done excellent work to interview so many stakeholders across the community in every kind of nook and cranny, you know, end users of healthcare, healthcare providers, nonprofit structured people, longtime residents, elected officials. That's all excellent work and I would say that you're ahead of probably everybody else in, because of that due diligence. So that's great. So I look to learn from you. But there must have been decision points, right? So all this analysis boils down to, we, we're making an evaluation, we think that there's one or more forks in the road. We are recommending to the city and the community that we go down this, not that, and then the next fork in the road and not that. Those are the, and I'm talking about, if that's not clear, structure.
Sure.
Fund, you know, funding status and focus on what health conditions, although that may not be something that we get to until the foundation's actually created.
Yeah. So I can just say to some of those points and to answer your previous...
Yeah.
Let me start with the first question that you answered and then maybe Aaron can help me with some of the others. But in terms of the first question, we, and as we have communicated to candidates, director candidates, we anticipate that the first year will be, at least the first year will be a pretty significant lift. So we needed people who would be committed and who would have the knowledge and skills that would help them basically create a foundation. Some of those things that we anticipate in the first year, including, include rather a strategic planning process, so we need people who are data-driven, who understood strategic planning, who could possibly hire an executive or hire staff, so that was another piece. One of the first charges that we have is for this board to identify or articulate an equity, diversity and inclusion statement. To your point earlier, and I apologize if I misspoke, we actually built into our process, which we believe was communicated to you or at least to the mayor, that we actually don't, we don't intend to offer the position to any of the board candidates. We plan to hand that over to you and that you all will, as the regulators, will offer the position to folks once you feel sufficiently ready to do so. We felt that that was not our, those were not our keys to turn over. To your point, to your subsequent points about limited life versus spend down, we have recommendations for all of those. I think we made clear in some ways where we are in many of those questions in terms of the legal structure and how that could evolve over time. Those are all well documented and we certainly have recommendations to the future board, but we're not fiduciarily responsible for those. The board will have the legal responsibility for carrying out those, for carrying out those responsibilities and shepherding that legal structure. I don't know if Susan has...
I just, one other quick comment is we really can't submit the tax exempt application until we have a board. So that's one of the reasons why this needs to go forward. We could incorporate, but we can't go any further until we have actually some representatives who are responsible for the organization.
In many ways, though, the first board would follow in the footsteps, in the analytic footsteps anyway, that you're already made a lot of progress on, right? Presumably, they would be looking at the same information, the same best practices. Some key decisions are going to await them, but they're not going to find a radically different set of health needs, they're not going to, I would anticipate differ radically from you on the ethics and the inclusion, you know, the mission values and state, mission, mission statement, the vision and the values, correct? So I appreciate, it's helpful to, A, get a refresher on, I know you've told us this before, but it's helpful to get it restated and confirm that I got you correctly. And secondly, if I got, I mean, they're essentially going to look at things fresh when they're incorporating in their first official board and the organization actually exists. They're going to have some of the framework from your work and from what the city enacts, but then they're going to have to, I guess I'm confused, Anne, I think you said, they're going to, they're going to look at it fresh or they're not going to look at it fresh?
Look at what fresh? I'm sorry.
The needs of the community or is that what you're referring to?
Regulations.
Yeah.
The, I'm referring to something you just said and I don't know what you just said, which is why I'm asking the question. You talked about a number of choice points that the initial board will be facing in its first year of work as it does the heavy lift of creating the foundation in actuality. And presumably, that work really is following
Sure.
a lot of the groundwork you've already laid. Now, they could ultimately differ on some key points, but presumably, we'd be on the same track.
Yeah, and that shows up in the sort of, the task at hand is laid out in the code of regulations, as well as, I mean, even down to these skills and demographics and things that we feel are important to be represented and what we heard from the community was important for the foundation to move forward with. I'm really sorry, I'm not fully understanding your question, so maybe Aaron can...
Right. And I think, you know, in terms of the information that we received through what I think some of what you're referencing, the interviews that were completed, the local experts that came in, the information that was provided to us, you know, kind of on the needs of the Lakewood community, all of those documents will certainly be shared with them through their onboarding process. If they choose to do some more info gathering on their, you know, on their own, that would be up to them. To your point about, you know, will they be deciding on, you know, conditions that they will be, you know, funding or supporting, I don't know that, I don't know that this foundation will have a set of conditions that it funds or supports, you know? I think what we've sort of laid in the groundwork, we're really trying to sort of encourage through the documents that we've created, this big picture of health and wellness in Lakewood. So they may not opt to focus on, you know, we're going to focus on opioids and then we're going to focus on obesity and then we're going to focus on this. Those decisions would be purely up to them. What we're trying to kind of engrain in some of the work that we've done is bringing people on that can think innovatively, out of the box, look at sustainable change, that really means policy, changing the systems within the community, changing the environment within the community, that really actually creates a place around residents that helps support health and wellness. So it really may not, it could, it could come down to they want to focus on certain conditions. We're certainly not precluding that, but we have not, you know, laid out for them, like this is what you need to focus on, because we didn't feel like that was our role.
Okay, final question, I'm taking up a bunch of time, but the, so the recommended structure is something that they are following or they'll have to make a decision about following and that's important, I'm talking about the legal and financial structure, that's important because that'll shape
Yes.
the scope of what's possible
Yes.
for their initial years of activity, right?
Yes, right.
So, so can you just pin that down for me? Your... You're baking that into the initial framework, and, and that's already decided, or that's not the case?
Those are part of the recommendations that we have in front of you tonight.
Right. So if, if, if we were to collectively, the regulators implement those, the first Board would have that much set?
Correct.
And if they wanted to change it, they, they, it would be an involved amount of work to do that.
Right. They can change things per the process outlined for them in the Code of Regulations.
Okay, along, along the lines of any organization with a bylaws or governing-
Correct.
Right, okay. All right, so, so that, the, the process really supports ultimately the substantive work that we all envision or hope for. And so, you know, another time I, I'll deepen my understanding of, of what you were starting to get at there, which is the, the kind of work we envision, or we, we think that would be most effective with this, frankly, a limited pool of funds. Twenty-four million, that eventually becomes 32 million, is only so much money in a given year, right?
Right. We just did not want to pigeonhole a new foundation into focusing on one or two very specific things, again, because the task forces is not the same as the Board-
Sure.
-and the environment and, you know, climate of health and wellness in Lakewood can change and will change, frankly, throughout their lifespan.
Sure. That makes good sense to me. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Vice President Anderson finally.
Thank you. Dan, how many of the 81 original applicants for the Board were Lakewood residents?
Oh, God. I don't know the exact number.
Just out of percentage.
Oh, it was vast majority.
Very good. So, that just sort of proves the point, right, that no matter what Board or commission we look to put together, either a foundation plan, task force or whatnot, you know, it's, it's almost like looking for hay in a hay pile, as opposed to a needle in a haystack, which is the outlier, that the-
That's right.
-the commonality seems to be that, you know, we have a, a lot of folks with talent and time and effort and, and love, so thank you all for being part of our collective hay pile. So you're all pieces of hay in a hay pile, as we all are.
Thank you.
In regards to just a, a specific point that I saw, the incorporator, specifically, what is the definition of the incorporator? Is that us? Is that, who, who might that be?
The incorporator is actually the person who files the articles of incorporation, and that's the only thing about the incorporator. Because we didn't have, the task, the new Board is not going to have an office, it's not going to have an address and all of that right away. It was suggested, and I'm fine with it, that we use the, my law firm's address initially, but that would be changed very quickly, as soon as we have somebody, somebody up and running. But I would be the incorporator, and then that's really all the, that's the end of it, of what, what happens.
Got you. So council's role is to have final say as to who the initial 15 members are of the Board, make the incorporator aware of those, incorporator files those with the application.
Correct. I mean, if council wanted somebody else to be the incorporator, that would be fine. You'd have to decide who it would be, but we're happy as part of our service to take that on.
Got you. Thank you for that. I just wanted to have that point out there. And to some of the points that were made earlier about right of first refusal, I think that's, that's an important sort of issue to, to get our hands on. I remember from a few years ago, that my takeaway was similar to the Mayor's in that I didn't think that the Cleveland Clinic wanted its resources to go to pay another healthcare agency to, to do some sort of healthcare outreach, which it could be doing. So didn't want to pay another healthcare entity to do its work. So that's how I, I thought the original right of first refusal, but I think that that question is very dynamic and would sort of help the city and help everyone to, to, to have a better study of that going forward. And as far as the overall initial process, Dan, I can certainly appreciate the difficulty of sort of threading this needle, right? You're trying to create a foundation that helps everyone in Lakewood meet their health potential. But you're also trying to create a foundation that's nimble enough not to know what the future holds. So you didn't exactly have specific healthcare outreach plans in your mind, you sort of had some thoughts as to what this foundation might want to do in the future, but you're just trying to create a situation that was nimble enough for it to be able to react. And, you know, I, I worked with Mitch Balk years ago, and I know him well enough to, to know that foundations are living, breathing animals, and they adjust, and they morph into, into what the needs are of that moment, hopefully before that moment has arrived, right? So, a little bit about threading that needle and trying to create something that's nimble enough to, to be flexible toward future opportunities. Is that about what you're working from?
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. We, I think, have a brief follow-up question from Councilman Litten, and I would just note for everyone that we are coming up on the 7:30 mark, but this has certainly been a fantastic and very informative conversation so far. Councilman Litten.
And maybe this is a Susan question, I don't know, but my understanding of applying for 501(c)(3) status is that, you know, you apply, whenever it is granted, it's retroactive to when you applied.
Correct.
But does the fact that we may not have that status officially by the time the foundation is ready to receive funds, does that in any way challenge our ability to receive those funds?
No. Legally, the organization can receive funds while its application is pending. Now, if it for some reason was turned down, that, that creates some issues about the deductibility to the donor of the contributions, although the Cleveland Clinic and, they're, they're tax exempt, so that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Sure. So actually, if, if possible, there, I would like to at least get, get one question in myself, very briefly. Not to be too selfish here. But what I was going to ask is, with respect to the interview process, and, you know, we, we talked about 15 because two are going to come from the LHA entity, but really, we're actually talking about 13 because two of the 15 are coming from your own membership.
At least two.
Right. And so, so with respect to those decisions, I guess, I was interested to know, are you, how is the, how is the decision as to which of your own members are going to be recommended? How is that decision being arrived at? Is that by the subcommittee? Is it by the total membership? Would it be helpful if it's an awkward kind of decision to make internally for a different entity to make that? But go ahead.
No, we, we anticipate, and this was something that we, as a task force, we're all quite committed to, that everyone who is appointed to the Board ultimately goes through the same process. That includes task force members. So as we look at the entire complement of the candidates, and we sort of figure out where there's complementarity, where there's a, where there are perhaps gaps in knowledge, all of that, or skills rather, all of that will be taken into consideration. We will be looking at a full complement of, of Board candidates together.
That makes great sense to me, and also to have a consistent process across the Board is desirable.
And the third party, I mean, all of the task force members were required to apply to a third party in the same way that everyone else was.
Got you. Thank you. It looks like we've got one more very brief follow-up.
Thank you. Just to flag a, a specific topic of, of special interest to me would be the way in which we nominate and appoint future Board members, not we rather, but the Board. Once it's set up, it's a private nonprofit corporation, correct? So it's not public in the sense of, like, the city is public, or you, the task force is public. So I do see in there that it's stated explicitly that there's an intent that there will be community input, and, and there's means for diversity. But an important way is that, that frankly, sunshine and inclusiveness can, can be undermined is through the vacancy appointment process, where you essentially have somebody come on board and they get automatically rolled into the new term. So I don't have a, a, a specific amendment to propose, but, but I guess I'd flag that for my council colleagues and, and for the task force to make sure that, that we have enough specific language, you know, to support the intent, that there would be opportunity for new people to get on, and, and that the Board could be reflective-
So there is a requirement-
Over 20 years, you know?
So there is a requirement in, as written in the Code of Regulations right now, that Board vacancies be publicly promoted, so it cannot be all done behind closed doors. In addition, that's going to be a very big component that they're going to have to think about and include in their community engagement and accountability plan, that they'll be looking at every year, and, you know, potentially editing every three years.
And in terms of, one of the things that, there was strong consensus around the idea of, of term limits. So a maximum of three, three-year terms, because we've seen in other foundations, Mount Sinai included, but, but many foundations where we'll have folks, the same people making the same decisions for 20, 30, 40 years, and to your point about kind of turnover and making sure that there's new blood and innovation, that's all built into the Code of Regulations as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're just a few minutes shy of 7:30, so I think we're going to have to leave the conversation here tonight. As is mentioned, I think we do anticipate having you guys back at some point in the future, as well as continued public dialogue at the community meeting and other venues as we continue to work through the, the final stages here. So, thank you again for all your hard work and the wonderful presentation tonight, and the great treatment of some hardball questions, so we really appreciate it. Thanks again.
Thank you.
There being no further business before Committee of the Whole moves to adjourn.
Sir.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn Committee of the Whole? Hearing none? All those, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That motion passes. Committee of the Whole is adjourned.